Hello and welcome to the beautiful Bailey Center Auditorium on the grounds of Wallace State College in Hansville. Thank you to our gracious hosts, Wallace State College and Dr. Vicky Karlowix. The 2025 Tribune Debate Series and Question and Answer Forums continues today with municipal elections, more specifically, the Coleman City Council. These events are designed to give the public more unfiltered answers without the questions ahead of time, direct comparisons, and meaningful conversations. We now finish with Coleman City Council Place Five. So we shift our focus to the candidates running for Place Five. Both Jenny Folsom and Kim Hall are present today, so we shall move on with the debate. We work diligently to make sure all are here, so we would like to thank you both for showing up today. And with that, we will get to the rules. There are no electronic devices permitted. If you do have one on stage, please go ahead and turn it off, including a smartwatch. Two, questions alternate, so no candidate always answers first or last, other, more than the other. Opening statement is limited to 60 seconds and may be a prepared statement. Time allotted per question will be two minutes. Closing statement is limited to 90 seconds and must be spoken without notes. One rebuttal per question, but only if a candidate calls out the other, and that is set for 45 seconds. Facts only, no accusations without proof. This will only allocate additional time to your opponents. Voters deserve substance over slogans. So let's get to it. No, you're good. All right. And with that, we will begin and we'll go by first names for the debate. Kim, if you would, please, your opening statement.
Hi, I'm Kim Hall. In June of this year, I released an online campaign survey, excuse me, seeking input from people in our community. The survey is based on a five-point scale, and results indicate the highest-rated categories in our community are safety, 4.0 out of 5, employment opportunities, 3.7, and identified areas for improvements are streets, traffic flow, neighborhood support at 2.9, effective communication and transparency at 2.7. Just as I have worked to seek input in various ways throughout the past three to four months of this campaign, however long it's been at this point, I will continue to do that as your council representative. I am eager to serve. I will serve with energy and innovation and vitality over the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you for your opening statement. And Jenny, your opening statement.
I'm Jenny Folsom and running, can you hear me? I'm Jenny Folsom, running for City Council Place Five. I appreciate the Tribune for having us here today and for Dr. Karlowix for allowing us to be on this beautiful campus. I'm a lifelong resident of Coleman, parents, grandparents, and everything. Started at East Elementary and graduated from Coleman High School. From there, I went to Auburn University for my bachelor's in secondary education. Later, obtained a master's in elementary education, and finally got my doctorate from the University of Alabama in Administration of Higher Education. My first full-time career was always in education, starting teaching sixth grade at, here in Coleman County, at West Point Elementary. Later, after teaching, I ended up my last 22 years in education here at Wallace State, so I feel like I've come home again, where I served as Vice President, Dean of Academic Affairs, and second-in-command to the President, Dr. Karlowix. I look forward to this. Well, I've seen some of the debates earlier. It's a very healthy discourse. I know we're going to cover most of the pressing issues of infrastructure, economic development, public safety, and quality of life. So I think we're ready to begin, and I appreciate this.
Thank you both for your opening statements, and we'll get right into it. With question number one, going to Kim. This will be pressing issue. What is the single most important issue facing Coleman right now? And how would you, and how would your approach to solving it differ from your opponent?
Well, according to the survey data that I shared in my opening statement, one of the most pressing issues for the citizens that have provided that input is effective communication and transparency. There are so many different ways that we communicate in 2025. If you look online for the Coleman City app, if you go to the App Store, you're not going to find that. You have to search through the website. It's called See, Click, Fix. And there's an app, but I believe that we could improve that communication so that we could provide push notifications to residents who want that type of information by having a Coleman City app that you could actually locate on the App Store, similar to the one that they have in the city of Phoenix, where we provide information and updates in real time, where we provide notifications to citizens regarding issues or emergencies that impact them. So I do believe effective communication and transparency is one of those issues, and I would propose that we do that through a new and updated app. Other means of communications are we all get mass text messages, we all get emails. You can opt out if you don't want that information, or if you don't want those emails. But that's definitely a way in 2025 that we can communicate with our citizens to get necessary information out to them immediately in real time.
Thank you for your answer. And Jenny, same question regarding pressing issue. What is the single most important issue facing Coleman right now? And how would your approach to solving it differ from your opponents?
I agree with Kim that communication and transparency is very important, and I hope we've been working that daily to try to improve in Coleman. Probably in talking to people, the most pressing issue that I keep hearing about is infrastructure and traffic. I drive those same roads that you do every day. I think that we have, some of our challenges have been as a result of our successes. We have, we are a safe, opening, clean, welcoming community. We are strong and we're thriving. And with that, it brings additional traffic. People want to move here and live here. I think it's, but it's not just the people that are moving in and living and working here. It's also, we are a big draw area for our trade centers, our restaurants, our job opportunities with businesses and industries. And that we are able, that brings a lot of traffic from surrounding counties, as well as Coleman County, to come to here to shop and do things like that. We also are blessed being at crossroads of major highways that intersect right in downtown Coleman, 31, 278, 157, and our proximity to interstate. So I think a lot of those challenges will deal with its opportunities and work to try to improve.
Thank you for your response. And Jenny, we will stay with you for this next question regarding growth management. How should Coleman address traffic congestion, especially near new commercial developments?
Okay. Thank you. I think I touched on that with the traffic. But with new growth and development, we, in the commercial end of it, we, sometimes we don't really incentivize businesses, like new restaurants or large private businesses. We may do some in-kind services, trying to help provide excel and decel lanes into their opportunities for them. But we also work very hard to, what was the last part besides traffic?
To help with traffic congestion, especially near commercial developments.
Okay, I mentioned commercial developments. We, with commercial developments, we are often timed to incentivize them with, like I said, additional paving in and out of their place of business. But we do this because we are going to gain much more in the jobs they bring in, the investment they put into our community, spending. In the last 10 years, I think it's in excess of $10 billion that businesses and industries have put their money into Coleman, providing those jobs and buying products, updating things. And so I think we get a good return on that.
Thank you for your response. And Kim, same question regarding growth management. How should Coleman address traffic congestion, especially near new commercial development?
There's no doubt that the new growth in industry and retail affects our traffic flow. And there's no doubt that it's almost a necessary evil to that growth. So we're benefiting from the industry and the retail, but our citizens are definitely feeling that congestion, especially right there on 31. And we all know that we have no control over 31, or 278, or 157. But we seem to bottleneck in those areas. So as I mentioned earlier, effective communication. I think one thing that we can do is encourage people, this goes back to just communicating, encourage people to take those alternate routes. One route that I've noticed that really bottlenecks, if you're coming down West Main from Publix to 278, we bottleneck there until we go past 278, and then it's wide open and we flow well. So just identifying some areas where maybe we could reroute where we do have control to open things up a bit, a little bit. I know there's a lot of work that's done on the streets and the stoplights, increasing turn lanes to reroute people off of those heavy traffic areas to alternate routes. We have a great problem here. There is growth, there is development, there is industry, there's retail. But we do have to look at how it affects our citizens and actually take that into consideration and realize that it impacts their daily life.
Thank you for your response. And we're going to stay with you for our next question regarding budget priorities. Which city departments or services do you believe should receive increased funding? And if additional funding is needed, where would you responsibly reallocate or reduce spending to make that possible?
I'm not sure that any necessarily need increased funding at this time. I know the budget is being developed at this time. As in all things, budgets need to be directly correlated to data, and it needs to be coordinated with the strategic plan of the district and the strategic plan of the department. So when needs are identified, we've got to ask, does this meet the strategic plan of the department? Does this meet the strategic plans of the overall city plan? What's the current budget? What revenue do we have coming in? And how will we reallocate or allocate that revenue to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the department and the needs of the citizens?
Thank you for your response. And Jenny, same question regarding budget priorities. Which city department or services do you believe should receive increased funding? And if additional funding is needed, where would you responsibly reallocate or reduce spending to make that possible?
Okay. Our budgeting process is beginning to start right now because the new fiscal year is October 1. Part of our planning that, we do a five-year strategic plan and update that every year. We have 18 departments in the city of Coleman, and each department ahead of time has come to us with a written plan from their input from their department of their needs and wants, their goals and accomplishments from last year, their needs and wants for the upcoming year, as well as year two, three, four, and five afterwards. So it's easy then to talk to the departments about prioritizing what they want and what they need. And wants are always usually greater than needs. And so then we have to, we have discussions back and forth and to see if something that maybe not, would not be available financially in the budget might be something for next year. We've been so fortunate that Coleman is growing and thriving. Our economy has, the last five years, we've increased about 7% to 8% annually. But we don't necessarily spend all that. We do a conservative budget with what we have. And things like extra money that comes in, we put it in our reserves, that we've built up to almost 10 months in the last five years, opposed to the three months that most municipalities are supposed to have at our size. We don't automatically spend that, but we do have it there for emergencies or unusual things that might happen, such as the pandemic, the tornado, or necessities, emergencies that just come up. We do build up our reserves with that and are able to plan for future needs for Coleman.
Thank you for your response. And Jenny, we're going to stay with you for this next question. This is kind of a lengthy question, I'm sorry. So it's involving housing and zoning. With rising home costs and increased demand for housing in Coleman, do you believe zoning laws should be reformed to allow for more affordable housing options, such as multifamily units or smaller lot developments, such as a tiny home village? Or do you believe the market should regulate itself without changes to zoning? Please explain how your position would impact long-term residents, new families, and future growth? And I can repeat that at any point. I'm sorry.
Yes. I'll start with, with housing that you, I think that you began with back during our, one of our first five-year strategic plans. The Chamber of Commerce, housing, the demand for housing, affordable housing, was one of the biggest issues. They did a housing study, we got to work on that. And I think within the last five years, we have done a pretty good job in that, but we can always do better. Now we are able at a point that we can selectively look at subdivisions and new developments that are wanting to come to Coleman. We just recently, this past year, when a plan came to us, we did not think it met our, our needs right, our needs or our wants for our citizens. So we told the developer to go back to the drawing board and maybe come back with something that would be better suited for our community. I think our established neighborhoods, I see, what I love to see are these young families, our children and grandchildren, returning, maybe they moved off for work or to further their education, returning to Coleman to work, get good-paying jobs and raise a family here. And so I think that that has helped with revitalizing some of the older neighborhoods as New York people come into our community. And I probably forgot in the last part of your question.
And so one of the other parts of the question was, would you be in favor of affordable housing such as multifamily units or smaller lot developments, such as a tiny home village?
Yes, I've seen, I've seen recently just outside here in Wallace State, a developer's putting up tiny homes for student housing, which is a good idea. And we are multifamily housing, we are in need of. It's just the location is often a very difficult problem to solve. We have zoning laws that affect where we could put that. And we're always looking at, we're always open to looking at, at changes, things that would benefit our citizens.
Thank you so much. I know that was a long question. And of course, I will give you the same allocation as far as rereading or clarifying. So Kim, on housing and zoning. With rising home costs and increased demand for housing in Coleman, do you believe zoning laws should be reformed to allow for more affordable housing options, such as multifamily units or smaller lot developments, such as a tiny home village? Or do you believe the market should regulate itself without changes to zoning? Please explain how your position would impact long-term residents, new families, and future growth?
Okay. Yeah, I might come back to you, no?
Perfect.
I don't really see a way that our infrastructure can handle multifamily dwellings or tiny home developments. It's not that I'm opposed to those. I just don't know that we're in a position right now to approve that in the city of Coleman with our infrastructure and how that would affect our police, our fire, our hospitals, our educational systems, and our, our streets and traffic flow. So it's not that I'm opposed to that type of development, but I don't know that right now we're ready to take that step. So I do believe that we could take strides to incentivize the redevelopment of our existing neighborhoods. There's been some of that that has occurred, but in going door-to-door, I've really seen a lot of abandoned or uninhabited homes. My, my daughter lives in some areas in Birmingham, and I see those neighborhoods that have been revitalized. We've had a little bit of that, but I would like to see incentives for developers or private individuals to come in and revitalize the homes in areas when they're, when they're sitting there empty, like Care Lakers in Larkwood and Woodland Heights and Northwood. Those are really nice homes, areas around West Elementary, where there are good homes that could be affordable housing, but they do need some work. And we may have people that can't necessarily afford to purchase the home, then make all of the renovations. So I would really look to investigate how we could possibly incentivize that type of development to provide affordable housing.
Jenny, any other clarification or, okay, I think you answered the question. All right. So Kim, we will stay with you regarding open government. What, would you support mandatory public disclosure of campaign donations over a certain threshold, no matter if it came from a PAC or a special interest group? Why is this important to the voters?
No, say that again.
Would you support mandatory public disclosure of campaign donations over a certain threshold, no matter if it came from a PAC or a special interest group? Why is this important to the voters?
Yes, you actually have to report campaign donations over a certain threshold now, whether it comes from a PAC or a special interest group or an individual. So that threshold is there. If you purchase something yourself, you can put that, you have to put that in as an in-kind or donation to yourself. So I'm absolutely in favor of reporting that, and we're doing that now. So yes.
The reason we ask is because some special interest groups do not have to disclose who their donors are. Only PACs have to disclose their donors, special interest groups do not.
Okay, I may have misunderstood the question. I thought you meant the candidate has to disclose.
Yes, whether.
But you're saying the PAC or the special interest group should have to disclose? Their donation, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you meant the candidate report.
Yes, I would be interested more than if you'd like to.
Okay, yes, I would be in favor of that as well.
And Jenny, same question.
Yes, I agree with Kim, and I understood it the way you did it begin with. And we already have to send in that report monthly up until the last month of the election. Then weekly, we have to send it in to the Secretary of State, and that's a requirement to disclose all of our donations and expenditures. If you're talking about those, the PAC-to-PAC things that happen in the federal government, state government, I have not been aware of that in the local government like us. But because we, I haven't received any PAC money, so, or special interest groups, but I would be in favor of that also.
Thank you so much. Sorry about the confusion on that one. That was, I know that's a little different. It's just that special interest groups, historically, they're the ones who create, can create a PAC. But a special interest group does not have to disclose who their donors are or how much they spent.
All right. So we will move on to public safety and health, which will go with Jenny. And what steps would you take to ensure Coleman remains a safe, healthy place to live as the population expands?
Did you?
That was for you.
It was for me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, public safety is, is very important, and we've been investing a lot in additional police, fire, and dispatch services, providing with extra communication resources and improve the starting pay for all of those departments. We value the public safety very much, and we're, we've been known as a very safe environment for, that's why so many people want to come to Coleman and live here, or just to come and shop or visit some of our festivals. So, yes.
Thank you for your response. Kim, same question, public safety and health. What steps would you take to ensure Coleman remains a safe, healthy place to live as the population expands?
I would definitely want to work with public safety on ensuring that our officers and our fire and police have the most advanced training and technology available. As far as the hospital goes, I would love to see, I know that we provide funding and financial support to the hospital. I would love to see that be one committee assignment, even though we don't necessarily have someone on the board. But as a liaison to the hospital, focusing as well on mental health, that's a critical need in our community. We could definitely look at having mental health liaisons that work with the council, with public safety, and with the hospital. Although we have Wellstone, we have good resources, but there's still so much that we can do in the area of mental health. I'm actually talking with our state legislators and hoping that we can work on some legislation to provide resources to people in need. So I think public safety, fire, safety, health, mental health, resources are going to be critical moving forward. They're critical now. As I mentioned in my survey, that was the highest-rated area that people noted on the survey that I sent out. So people do feel very safe here, but we've got to continue to make sure that that is established for years to come.
Thank you for your response. Kim, we'll stay with you for this next question in its regard, political pressure. Public officials often face pressure from donors, interest groups, or political allies. For the incumbent, well, sorry. I'm just going to read the whole thing. For the incumbent, can you give a specific example of a time you faced such pressure and how you responded? For the challenger, how would you handle this kind of situation if elected? And what safeguards would you put in place to stay accountable to voters?
No, I was principal at Coleman High School. That was a lot of pressure. So I had pressure put on me at every angle, whether it was academics, athletics, whether it was fine arts, whether it was cheer or dance. There's always pressure when you're dealing with people's children. There's pressure when it, when it comes to hiring people in the community and, and someone wants you to hire this person over that person. So I have definitely dealt with that type of pressure, whether it be through the area of politics or public education. It's still pressure. Could you elaborate on the question one more time?
For the, for the challenger, how would you handle? Public officials often face pressure from donors, interest groups, or political allies. So how would you handle this kind of situation if elected? And what safeguards would you put in place to stay accountable?
As with anything I do, I do my research, I do my homework, I make sure that I'm thorough. I'm an independent thinker, although I do seek input and I want to work with a team. But I'm always going to bring the research to the table. I'm always going to do my homework, as I would tell people at school, let me think all the way around it before I make a decision. But being persuaded by a special interest group or political donors is not how I operate. I said, I am an independent thinker, and I will stand for what I believe in.
Thank you for your response. Jenny, same question, political pressure. Public officials often face pressure from donors, interest groups, or political allies. For, for the incumbent, can you give a specific example of a time you faced such pressure and how you responded?
I'm like, Kim, as an educator and being a vice president and dean here at Wallace State, I used to tell people that when a student ended up my office, they usually cussing or crying and before the next step to go to the president. So I was used to that. As having served on the city council, we have had numerous things come before us at times that were very oftentimes emotional issues with, with, with people about whether something was happening in their neighborhood or a special event we were about to have. And we had a lot of good discourse with that. I have, I'm also a very independent thinker, and I've also been able to usually try to solve by communication, talking to people, and coming to some kind of logical and informed decision. On the city council, there are five of us. And so, and we can only act as a legislative body. We can't act independently as a one. So we, we have a lot of talk and discourse and whoever the three to two, or four to two, or sometimes it's five to zero. We come up with that, we move and we go on. But as far as, I really haven't had a lot of people try to pressure me as for the political, something that they, they want to do that would be against my best interests for the city of Coleman.
Thank you for your response. Thank you for your response. And Jenny, we'll stay with you for this next question on citizen involvement. Would you support adding or expanding citizen advisory boards on issues like parks, housing, or economic development?
Yes, I definitely support that. And we currently have citizen support groups, citizen involvement groups and boards for our industrial development. We have it for our parks and recreation. There's probably several others that I'm forgetting about. But we have an arts council and working with them and with citizens. We are now moving to finally get a home for our theater and performing arts. And we've had a lot of community input on that. And citizen involvement is absolutely necessary for us to grow and get input. People always have great ideas that maybe someone hasn't thought of and to better this community.
Thank you for your response. Kim, same question regarding citizen involvement. Would you support adding or expanding citizen advisory boards on issues like parks, housing, or economic development?
Absolutely. Citizen and stakeholder involvement and engagement is critical to the success of any organization. As in schools, we had booster clubs, and those booster clubs weren't just there to raise money for the organization, but they're there to provide input. We had student government associations where we would ask for their parents to be involved as well. So I believe that town hall meetings would be beneficial, those citizens who want to be involved, who want to learn more, who want to hear more. I know that the council meetings are live streamed, and there have been some forums recently through Park and Rec to get additional inputs from the community. But I think expanding that to regularly scheduled town hall meetings and regularly scheduled surveys, at least annually, would be a way to get that input and then engage the citizens with the data that we received and how we could actually move forward to work together and grow.
Thank you for your response. And Kim, we will stay with you for this next question regarding motivation and alliances. Voters often want to know the deeper reason for candidacy. What truly drove your decision to run? And do you see yourself as part of an incumbent block, a challenger team, or nothing?
I see myself as Kim Hall. When I retired from Coleman High School in 2022, actually when I retired, I had no plan afterwards. I just knew through prayer with my husband and my family that it was time and I needed to turn over the reins, and I was ready to do that. And so I retired, and for two months, I didn't do anything. And everybody said, what are you doing leaving the high school? And so I took a break for a little bit, and then I went to work for the State Department of Education and now work for a private educational consulting company. And I love the work that I do because I am developing leaders who then go to develop other leaders. And I'm able to do that throughout the country. A lot of my work is remote. I do travel some. And I enjoy that work because I find myself to be a solution finder, not just a problem solver, because a solution finder works with others to collaborate and find those solutions. So as my family and I prayed about this election, we made a decision that I did feel called. I couldn't I couldn't let go of it. My parents came out, my husband, we sat down, we prayed, and I feel that it's a calling. I'm called to serve in areas of leadership. I have missed serving in my own community through my work, and so I'm ready to do that now, to come back here and serve at home.
Thank you for your response. And Jenny, same question, motivation and alliances. Voters often want to know the deeper reason for candidacy. What truly drove your decision to run? And do you see yourself as part of an incumbent block, a challenger team, or nothing?
Okay. Start over again on that question, please.
Voters often want to know the deeper reason for candidacy. What truly drove your decision to run? And do you see yourself as part of an incumbent block, a challenger team, or an individual?
Okay, my motivation to run goes back to this community. I love this community. This community helped raise me. My family and everyone in this community shaped my values, such as honesty and hard work and giving back to those who have given so much to you. So that's my motivation for running and my motivation to keep trying to do that. I enjoy it. I consider myself an independent thinker. I have lots of acquaintances on both sides, those who are in public office now and those who are running for public office. And I think both sides of this, the winner in the end is going to be our citizens. We have an election process. It happens every four years or so. And in the end, the healthy discourse like this that we're going through, the community will be better served.
Thank you for your response. And Jenny, we'll stay with you for our final question of the debate. And this regards legacy and vision. If voters look back in four years at your service, what single statement do you want associated with your name?
I want a single statement with my name, that I've been a committed, committed public servant. I've enjoyed everything that we do. Looking back on the last five years, all of the accomplishments we've we've made are just too numerous to mention. Looking forward, I want to be part of that vision and move us forward. I appreciate everything that we've done so far. I love this community deeply, and I want to keep serving.
Thank you for your response. Kim, same question, legacy and vision. If voters look back in four years at your service, what single statement do you want associated with your name?
So there's a song that I listened to for several years while in education, and it's actually the name of the song is Legacy. And in the chorus, it says, I want to leave a legacy. And how will they remember me? Did I choose to love? And did I point to you enough? And so that is what I want to be remembered for, for loving enough, listening enough, caring enough, working enough, and pointing to him enough and doing what's right by people, to serve the people of this community and just to share my heart for each individual, no matter where they come from, no matter what walk of life, just to show love.
Thank you for your response. I would like to thank both Ms. Folsom and Ms. Hall for coming out today and participating in this debate. And now we will get to our closing statements. Ms. Hall opened, and so Ms. Folsom, you will have the opportunity to go first on our closing statements.
Okay, I want to thank you for enabling us to have this discussion today. In closing, I want to tell everyone how much I appreciate everything that you do every day in this community. We, yes, we're growing, and I the cost of living is going up, and we're trying to help do what we can as a city government by not raising any taxes and trying to alleviate things that we can control, such as water, sewer, or sanitation rates. We haven't had a rate increase in three years, and because of we do conservative budgeting, and we try to listen to the people and try to do what is expected of us. Yes, we're growing, but I still think we have that same small-town feeling that we all love. And I want to help preserve that sense of community, our community with all of every single family in Coleman and every single neighborhood. And I would appreciate your your vote and support on Tuesday, the 26th. And thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your closing remark. And Ms. Hall, your closing statement, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you, Noah, and to the Coleman Tribune. Noah, I know you've you've put in some time this week doing this, and we appreciate the work that you've put in. To all the candidates who are running and who have served in office, I just appreciate your willingness to put yourself and your families on the line. I am ready to serve for the next four years with innovative leadership, with visionary leadership, with that relational leadership that I bring to the table. I'm ready to serve all citizens in our community and to work together with the next council, with our county commission, with our state legislators, and those in Washington, to do what's best each and every day for the citizens of Coleman. And I would appreciate your vote on August 26.
Thank you so much. And again, I would like to thank Jenny Folsom and Kim Hall for coming out today. I would also like to thank all the other candidates who are running for Coleman City Council, the ones who came out on Thursday, who are running for Coleman City School Board. Tuesday, we had multiple county debates, and then the Saturday before, we had Hansville. So we've had quite a few come through in just the last week. We will have another debate right before the October election, so look for that roughly one week before the election. Other than that, we'd like to thank everyone who came out today, everyone in the audience. We'd also like to thank everyone who watched at home. I would like to give a special thanks to Janet Chandler, who manned our front door, and Dustin Isom, co-owner of the Tribune, who actually handles all of our technical and audiovisual that we have done this week. So thank you all. And thank you, Dr. Carlwicks, and thank you to Wallace State for allowing us to be here and host these debates. Again, remember, just get out and vote. It's on Tuesday. Not that hard.